To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all for coming tonight? We have a motion to approve the agenda. So, Mr. Gary, second, and Kevin, discussion. All in favor? Nine on all. Both. Public comment? Do you have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion.
Motion by Michaeline.
Saga.
Second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Discussion items. Principal update? Mr. Lumberg?
Thank you. I'm just gonna go through a little bit of the process of how we help kids when we have concerns about a kid that's just not making it for some reason. Just all the steps that we try to go through to really help out the kids. So, you know, we think with a kid, you know, we have a concern, so, you know, what's the problem? What are the things that we're gonna do? What are the things that we're gonna look at? Well, what do we do first? Well, first, you know, we talk about this PBIS, really trying to reward kids for positive behavior. We try to work in the classroom with differentiation with all the students. Hopefully, that helps. We look at sometimes we need academic attention when they're not getting their homework done. Sometimes we have to have a behavioral attention, misbehavior. So, sometimes we have to go through that as well. We still have a concern. Well, we bring this back to what we call our student assistance team, and they start looking at things. And sometimes it's a parent referral. Help, my kid's struggling in school, what do I do? So, we do a lot of talking with what we call our SAT team, so our student, you know, assistance team. You know, sometimes, you know, we need to give some more academic attention, focus, having a teacher there to help the student out. Sometimes it's a matter of disorganization. We just need to, you know, you look at some of these kids' lockers, it's crazy. So, we have to grab a staff member, and we work on trying to organize a kid, whether it's, you know, using a planner, whether it's just a weekly, let's clean out the locker. We gotta work with the kids on that. Then we start really diving into data as well. We look at some of the Study Island cut scores. We look at the Ames Web, are they below the benchmark? You know, so then we could see if, you know, what are their academic needs? You know, their test scores, MCA, they partially meet, does not meet, you know? Do they have more than three discipline referrals? Boy, we were starting to get into a problem that we go, okay, maybe we need to look at that and correct the behavior. We have to teach them how to behave. Teach kids how to do math. We have to teach kids how to behave as well. We look at mid-quarter and quarter grades, are their grades low? So, then we're back to the student assistance team, which this team is just, they work really hard. And we meet weekly, and we have special ed teachers on there. We have our Adsys, Jill Diana, that's on there, the counselors on there, myself, the school site, you know? And so, we really look at the data. We look at, you know, the referrals that are coming in. What are those programming needs for the kids then? So, we look at interventions. And so, this group here then looks at the data, looks at the struggles that teachers may be having with a student, or just, you know, all that other data. And then we try to come up with interventions that's gonna help that teacher out so that student can be successful. You know, interventions as far as, okay, let's have this kid stay after school every week with the teacher, and see if that's gonna make a difference. Maybe we're finding a peer tutor, is that gonna make a difference? Maybe it's having tests read to them, maybe that's gonna make a difference for the student. So, we're looking for different types of interventions that we help the teacher with and suit with. All of these things, as we're doing that, one thing that's important to understand is we involve the parent early on in that as well, because we think it's really important that the parent understands what's going on and that are supportive of some of those interventions. The Adsys from the Student Success Center is what we call it. That's where we got that nice grant, and that's where Jill Diana runs that program. That's for really just the seventh through tenth graders, but once in a while after school and stuff. Surely, it can help the juniors and seniors to be successful. One thing that we do before we do much more than that is we make sure we try three different interventions by that classroom teacher. So, it's not just one, oh, let's now refer this kid out of the school, or do some of these more intense ones, what I'm gonna talk about. We always try to get at least three interventions that are tried by the teacher before we look at some of these other things. So, then we're back to that student assistance team again, really looking at what we can do. So, sometimes we have to refer to outside agency. We call this a group here, the Iowa Valley Mental Health, where they need some different social skills, how to interact. And a lot of times that's behavior, but a lot of, but other times it's just mental health pieces that we need more than just our counselor crystals able to give. Sometimes we need that intense intervention, and so, sometimes we need to refer to that program as well, which is doing a great job right here in school, so the kids don't have to go anywhere. Sometimes we realize, you know what, that they are lacking in some things, and we need to have a 504 plan for them to really give them that extra assist for some accommodations and modifications. Sometimes we have to, we realize the reading is low, and we start testing them, and they qualify for the ITA program, and so, then we're giving them that extra assist in the ITA program as well. Sometimes it's an intense behavioral intervention plan, where a kid has to really, every single hour, they're filling out a form, and the teacher's signing it about how their behavior is, and so, we're making sure we're modifying their behavior that's getting in the way of their academics. Sometimes it's a referral to summer learning center. For the ninth through 12th graders, we say, well, you know what? If they're not being successful here at the high school, maybe we need to look at an alternative school. Sometimes it's outside of here that we need to look at. Sometimes we can't meet the needs, and so, we look at very, very rarely used, do we do the alternative placement outside? But sometimes, you know, we have to do that. And the last thing we wanna do is a special ed referral. That's kind of the goal, is to stop and give the kids the tools they need before we get into a special ed referral. Excuse me. I went fast, I know there's a lot of questions kind of over the process.
Any other question?
Do you, has the need for these types of interventions increased over your years here? Or had, is, are you just informing us of systems in place, or what's the trend?
Well, both. You know, I wanna inform, you know, all these things that we try to do to help kids, but I see actually, you know, more needs. There's some things, more needs that we're having, some more behavioral things that we have to help kids with. You know, study habits. They don't have great study habits, and so, you know, helping the kids with that are really, really key. You know, so, I think there has, and you know, I definitely see that the group has been really good having it in school so the kids don't have to miss a lot of classes. They may have to miss a class or two to be a part of that, but that's really helping their emotional, social, emotional needs in a different setting.
You know, on the referral to Iowa Valley Mental Health, is that referral along with the parent? Or is that singular?
Yeah.
Always. Who pays for that?
Always through the parent. And part of it is, is, you know, with us as a school, you know, years ago, we entered into agreement with them. And part of it is with the parents, and a lot of it is through medical assistance and through some billing that way, because insurance will pay for that, because sometimes they work one-on-one too, so, both.
Collaborative dollars?
Collaborative dollars have paid for some of the student's compensation as well.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, school calendar?
And this should say, I should have cut this, it's twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. What, the, oh, and it does there. Okay. What you have is a tight calendar, meaning we start the day after Labor Day, and then we get done as close to the first Friday following Memorial Day as possible. And so, there's not a lot of days off during the year at all. Vacations, time off, very short. And then there's a loose calendar where it's spread out, and then it goes into the, it would go into the second week of June then, which it's a good thing we didn't have the loose calendar this year, because that really would've mucked things up with all the facilities things that we're doing. But the teachers have all the calendars now. In talking to the principals, the MNVA principals had talked to their staff ahead of time, and the staff didn't want to be, their face-to-face PD day, they didn't want that on the last day of a quarter, because then their PD, instead of sitting down and actually doing professional development, they felt like they needed to be doing grades. And so, they asked that that, those face-to-face PD days would not be on the end of a quarter, so that they could actually have the time to really delve into professional development topics and use their face-to-face time wisely, because it's more expensive to pull them together face-to-face. On-site, the teachers are all here, so we're, they're face-to-face here all the time. Where onsite, that's not the case. So, it was, that's why we have the MNVA and the onsite. Most of the days are consistent. It's just those face-to-face days that are the face-to-face professional development that are different between the two calendars. Qcomp days stayed the same, both onsite and online, so that if we want to do any cross pollination through Qcomp, mass trainings, we could still have that opportunity. So, just look them over. We'll be approving, we'll be approving the two thousand sixteen, seventeen, next Tuesday. And then what I'd like you to do is tentatively approve the seventeen, eighteen. And then next January, at the organizational meeting, we can officially approve that calendar, and then we can look at tentatively approving the next year. So, we're always proactive and a year out. So, we always know where the calendar is, and we can make those plans a year or two in advance. And just being more proactive to me, to do it this way. And I know we haven't done it that way before, but...
On the MNVA calendars?
Yep.
I didn't see the end-of-school day on either the tight or the loose.
Yep, the end-of-school day would actually be the half-day curriculum day at the very end. So, it, I, wouldn't let me do two colors in one box.
Okay.
So, June, that last half curriculum day would be our last half day of school.
Any other questions, Ellen?
Good question, thank you.
I know how this process works, but for the sake of anybody who's listening in, can you briefly just give a summary of the process for getting input into the development of the loose versus the tight calendar? Or did, I mean, was there input, or?
The principals and I worked on it at principal meeting, talked to leadership team, and then they talked to staff, but then they also know that the teachers get to always have a vote on what they would like their suggestion. So, their suggestion will come back to you. Now, as a board, this is your decision. So, you always have the option of following their suggestion or not. Their suggestion doesn't, doesn't lock you into one calendar or the other. But I do ask that you look at their suggestion and weigh that in your decision.
So, that will be included next Tuesday with the first calendar? I mean, so it's not just, we need to look at these and decide what we want, we'll be getting them?
You will be getting the calendar with, if you see where it's listed on B, I will put an asterisk by the one that the teachers said that they would like. So, you will see, this is the one the teachers liked, this is the one the teachers liked.
Thank you.
Do a lot of schools do a full week for spring break? Do you know?
Larger schools tend to, smaller schools have very tight calendars, because they would much rather get out a little earlier at the end of the year. That seems to be the way it breaks, as far as large, small.
I just know as a parent, it seems like right around then is when you get really tired, and you can use a week off. And you see all these other schools that have a week off, and like this year, we get, what, two days or something?
We're on a tight calendar. The other thing, and I know that, looking at it from a parent, I'm looking at it as an education side, spring break usually falls around Easter. Easter is usually right before we start MCA testing. The last thing I want to do is give kids a week off before I give them the test on which the entire district is evaluated. I would much rather have that time to cram as much into their heads as possible. Just saying.
That's probably why they feel like they need a break.
Yeah, there's your catch-22.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So, next we got site goal progress.
That's in your packet. This is something you'd asked for before, just to get a mid-year update of how the schools are working toward achieving their goals. So, I had each principal comment on how they are working, what they're doing to try to achieve those goals. Now, notice with most of the goals, we won't have that data until the end of the year. And so, a lot of it, you can't see a lot of data to go with those goals yet, but at least you can see all of the effort that's going into making sure that they are doing everything in their ability to ensure that each school will be succeeding in achieving their goals. Do you have any questions on anything that was listed?
I haven't had a chance to read them all, so I don't understand the way.
Oh, sure, definitely. As you're reading through, if there's anything that triggers a question, or you would like the answer fleshed out a little more, please let me know. The principals are very willing to share the good things that are happening in their buildings, or at their levels.
Any other questions, Ellen?
Thank you for sending this. I'm sorry, I haven't reflected, or haven't reflected on it. But my question that I do come up with is, when do, when do the sites set their staff development goals for the next year? I mean, we're here, we're getting an update on the goals in place, but when do those new goals?
They have, and that's?
Based on the, and the testing?
The goals for the, MCA goals are based on the previous year's results, and looking at where we need to be in two thousand seventeen. Next year, we'll know exactly where we need to be in two thousand seventeen, because we're there. But that's always been the target that was set for MDE.
Any other questions? Play, target, team, police, I guess, substitute?
Yes.
I'm John Hibbs, and Chad Walters are with the Sheldon Valley Sportsman's Association. And we're here, I guess, asking for permission from the board to allow us to form a high school trap team as part of the Minnesota State High School Clay Target League. Basically, for us to form a team with this league, it's separate from the Minnesota State High School Association, Athletic Association. But for us to form a team, we need the school board's permission to use some high school hurricanes, because for the team to be part of the school system or part of this, it has to be a high school. I gave you a kind of a summary, a breakdown of in general what's going on with the league. Basic costs, estimation of costs, and in essence, kind of how it's laid out and how we propose to go forward with that. I don't know if I need to go through all the details necessarily. If you have any specific questions about this, please ask.
How many other districts in the area are members?
La Crescent just formed a team. I think Rushford.
Rushford, Winona.
I think they have one. Winona has one. It's right now, based on some of the statistics, it's one of the fastest-growing activities in Minnesota high school right now. They had about eight thousand students participating last year. They're anticipating ten thousand students participating this year. It's really taken off. It's really interesting.
Which would be the largest shooting in the world?
Yeah, they have, they have a tournament up in Alexandria in mid-June. They anticipate ten thousand kids coming. Eight days of activities. You would go up and participate for one day, but they have eight continuous days of kids coming in and doing stuff. Largest event in the world of its kind. So, very interesting. The cost breakdown, and part of that is probably the minimum cost for a person that would be participating. If they wanna do more practice, there'd be some more costs from standpoint of material doing that. Our hope that this is successful, and we move forward, we might be able to get some potential local sponsors, businesses, or individuals that would contribute towards this, that would hopefully lower the cost for the athlete.
How many students do you have interested?
The initial school meeting was about forty kids showed up to get information. Lisa thought that it was probably about thirty kids that were truly interested in it. It'll come back down to kind of a cost breakdown for those families being able to participate ultimately. I think La Crescent has eighteen kids, eighteen kids registered to participate. I haven't talked to them recently to see if they have more, more kids.
How many kids can be on the team?
Minimum's five. You need five to feed them.
Is there a maximum?
As many volunteers and coaches we have.
So, they're ratio, like one coach for every five kids, or?
One to ten.
One to ten, okay.
One coach is a two-team.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The insurance is provided through the, through the league itself. When a student registers for that, the coaches are also registered for that. They provide liability insurance coverage for the activity for the kids.
Couple things, you know, Ted, I think you did a great job, and it is a phenomenal sport of what's happening with this trap shooting. Essentially, what the request is for us to be a sponsoring partner with this league. It's kind of like robotics, but we kind of brought that under the realm of the school. The Minnesota State High School League is a sponsoring partner of this trap shooting league. So, if the kids score high enough, they can participate in kind of a state high school league tournament. If the Minnesota State High School League wraps their umbrella up. What we would do, what the board would be doing is saying, yeah, we'd like to partner with you, and that's the only way they can get it going, is for a school district, a school to say, yes, we put the stamp of approval. One thing, since we would be doing this, we would require all of their coaches to have a background check, you know, gone through the school, so we make sure that the kids are safe that way. And of course, all the kids have to have the hunter safety, you know, as well. So, yeah, I totally endorse this idea, because like I said, while the fastest one, it's crazy how fast this one is growing.
Students would be required to supply their own guns?
Correct.
What do you do if a child wants, a boy wants to join and he doesn't have a gun? Assist some sort of way? I mean, take the fault, the guy can't afford, you know, doesn't have a gun.
Sponsor them a gun.
Is gun safety training mandatory?
Yes. It's required. We're both instructors. Actually, we're done here, we're running to start classes, start tonight too, but we're both instructors, and will be on the team as coaches, as bots, so.
Where would you be practicing?
Right now, at the Gopher State Sportsman's Club in La Crescent. They have lights, they have, they just expanded their, and they came to us and offered it. With their team, we'd probably be doing it different nights, in essence. We have a range. It's not currently set up to do this right now, but we wanna get this going, and we have to. To have a start for the fall even, we have to have a team established in the spring to be able to do the fall activities and going forward. But right now, talking with them, they're not gonna, the only fee that La Crescent has is the cost of the clay targets, which is four dollars and fifty cents a round, that would be part of that cost. And are very happy to have us come and participate at their facility. And it's just a really nice facility with lights and improvements. That would give the kids the best opportunity to be successful going forward in anywhere we go in terms of an activity, shooting trap for the kids.
Had you talked about with the user fee?
There's no, wouldn't be any user fee for the school, because we're just, you know, essentially.
No, we're not any sponsor.
We're not paying for a coach. You know, they're taking care of all that. All we're doing is saying, yes, that's the only way they can be a part of it. There's no high school league, Minnesota State High School league fee we have to pay either for it, so.
There's a thirty dollar registration fee for each student to become a member of the league, to basically be on our team. And then the other cost is strictly the material cost, the shells and the clay targets that you would be expending during the rounds.
And that would be the student would have to pay for that?
Right. Again, our hope would be if we can get some sponsorship a little bit, offset a little bit of that, but right now...
One of the questions was the travel to the location to go there. Do they have to get there on their own?
Right now, it's on your own, yeah.
And then go to an event?
Well, right now, all, the entire league takes place in your home league, your home range, in essence. And that's, everything's submitted electronically. If you shoot well enough, in terms of your scores are good enough, your team's good enough, then you get invited to the high school state tournament. And that would be travel, I'm not sure where that one's at. Prior Lake, I think, maybe it's up in the Twin Cities. You know, then we have to get there. If the, if the kids wanna participate in the Clay Target League tournament, which is open to everybody, you come in and you, like, you pay a very small fee, and then you get basically to participate in that. That's in Alexandria, and that would be some travel there too. It'd be wonderful if there was an option to provide some transportation to, like those events, if that was to happen. But right now, we're not asking, I guess, for that in terms of getting up.
Would these, would these take away from our spring sports then? Would these kids, or people that go up for that?
Well, one advantage with La Crescent, with the lights, I mean, we could have, they could do their, the shooting there. That would be, you know, seven o'clock. You know, it could be, it could be a little bit later in the afternoon or early evening that would take place, not be the after-school. I mean, part of that, we haven't...
And/or weekends as well, you know?
There's some flexibility with, we have, we have two nights that we can get our rounds in. And the kids have to do that as a unit. You have one day that's your primary day for getting this, getting the rounds in. If there's bad weather, storms, you push your backup day, kind of scenario. And then if you still can't get in that day, you have some reserve scores from earlier in the season that you store for those type of days. But we have some flexibility on the timing of that.
How long is the season?
It's nine weeks. Starts the first week of April, and the, mid-June's the tournament. So, it's like the first week of April and runs through the end of May.
So, does that, does that mean in nine weeks, they have to get eighteen rounds in? So, they gotta go out twice during the week?
Well, technically, one, one time a week, you would need to go shoot two rounds.
Okay.
But we have two days to do that, in a sense, per the league rules. So, if you have, again, a weather day, you can push it to your backup day.
So, it's not like two teams are leaving, or you're just?
You literally go out, we record them, and we upload them to a computer system that tracks everything.
Combine them, and then how well they do, it takes them to the next level, and if they do better, then you get to go out.
There's no real actual competition?
No, no, they're not in the same, yeah. They're not ten, five and five shooting against each other.
No, you're just...
Five, they record, send it in. Another group shoots, records, send it in.
The scoring system overall is kind of a weighted system, so you, it's kind of complicated. It balances things out to make things more even, so teams can be more competitive among each other. So, you might not have two kids that are really, really good that sort of weight the... scores for your team. It's much more of a balanced approach than make it more.
Kind of like a golf score, you got a handicap type thing.
And then they, they match you up with, with schools of similar size. So, we would probably be competing in essence with La Crescent and Rushford and some of those things. Plus, schools all over the state, but roughly our size, based on the number of athletes you have in your program.
So, it's based on members of the?
How big your team is.
Not based on the, this population of the school?
Correct, correct. It's based on the number of athletes.
Anybody have any other questions?
And you wanted to start this this year?
We're hoping to. We have to officially have, we don't have an official team formed in the sense of they know we've been talking to them. We need your approval. If we get your approval, we have to have our team formed by March first. And then the students have to be registered by the fifteenth and then due is by the, yeah, the thirtieth of March. And our intent would be, hopefully, of the approval, we would try to set up a parent-student meeting immediately to try to talk about what's going on and, and get things moving.
Amazing, they had to prove this next week.
Well, next week is the sixteenth, so that's the soonest we can approve it, is February sixteenth, so you.
That'd give us a, a couple of weeks to get a team and then about a month for the kids to get, to get enrolled. So.
So, our, our next meeting is a week from tonight.
So, anybody have any questions this evening? Who do we send the questions to if we have some? Send to Andy, send on, or?
Yeah, you could send them to Andrew, you could send them to me and that we can.
And you have their information if somebody has specific questions?
Lisa probably does too.
Lisa?
Or Todd.
Somebody has any questions, you know, to get hold of these guys, next week we'll.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. We're gonna run, we got a bunch of eleven-year-olds to teach. Good luck.
That's the dangerous part.
Okay, long-term facility maintenance updates?
Okay. We received the proposal from IEA and after meeting with Steve Musser and talking to Mike Frye, Pat, we're changed the proposal a bit so that we're guaranteed not to pay for days or materials that aren't used. So, then that, that did get changed in the proposal, but that means that abatement, the most it will cost is two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And the price could come down from that, but I know it's, it's a quarter of a million dollars. But that's worst-case scenario. I'm hoping that it comes down from there. The other thing is that with the abatement and talking to Pat, he said he would need that full six weeks, so all of June and the last two weeks of May, starting May twenty-third. He said that they've done a lot of abatement in buildings when people are still there. In fact, he said Mayo Clinic has abatement going on all the time in the clinic when people are there visiting their doctors. He said he would be able to abate the lower level of the elementary school, starting on the twenty-third. That means that we would have to move people out of the art room, the library, and the ITA room in the basement to start that abatement process while school is still in session. But the kicker is that that last week in May, after Memorial Day, they really need the whole building to get the project done so the contractors can get in. And so, that means that the elementary students would have those last three days off and would not come into school. The teachers would still come, but they would, could not report to the building because the building would be a total containment site. And there's, there's not really another way to do this and get the project done before school starts.
What happens if they run into a situation where they do it, then the contractors come in and start their work and then they have to do more because they misalign stuff, you know what I mean? They didn't take it away where they're supposed to.
That's.
Or they have to do more. Does that stop it again and then go back in and?
Are they doing spot abatement or are they doing the whole thing so that you don't have to worry about where they start drilling for hangers?
The hangers for the lights are going to stay in the same places, so we don't have to do the spot abatement. So, we're going to do the containment with the bulkheads. So, it's, we're not going to do the bags.
We'll have our contractors, actually, will, UNESCO will be working with IEA. They'll have a set of the construction plans and the documents. So, we'll go through all of that with them as part of their design. And then once they have an abatement contractor onboard and we have our construction contractors onboard, we will have a coordination meeting where those locations will be identified for the spot abatement. For example, some of the classrooms, we're not doing the entire ceiling. We would do about four feet into the building, or into that space. So, we can still get our ductwork up there. The light fixtures are gonna reuse their existing pendants, so we don't need to drill into the rest of that classroom, just that four feet in, so we can build a soffit, hang ductwork, hang our piping. So, that would all be a coordination effort that would happen before the abatement.
And that's what they're kind of looking at, one week in those areas instead of glove bagging and oops, two more, oops, three more type of thing. They just wanna take that floor, that area for a week and, and do the work and then shift to another area.
Like I said, I was just concerned if they go in and do it and all of a sudden they start doing the work and they go, you know, you missed a spot.
And that's, that's one of the concerns with the glove bagging. If we go in, we can do a hundred and sixty-four inch square areas and let's say we did eighty of them and we need another twenty, you have to go in and do air monitoring and everything else. You can't have anyone in there. So, to take that four feet, the width of the classroom, makes more sense than just trying to go in. And actually, it's a bit of a faster process because you set up the full containment. They can go in, take care of that room, and then move to the next room. So, if you contain an entire floor, that plastic setup, they're doing air monitoring the entire time, they can move from room to room without taking down the containment area, resetting that up.
So, the schedule is so tight, like, I'm confused, I'm not in the loop, I guess, but it's so tight that you're saying we have to take three days, the kids have to take three days off or they won't be in. And that's how much contingency is in there because everybody knows projects don't go on schedule. I mean, if we're that tight already, I'm really concerned because if we get delayed by a week, does that mean the kids can't start school on time?
Well, it is, there's a lot of this project that can't begin until July one or after because of the long-term facilities maintenance funding source. It can't start until that seventeen fiscal year.
So, this can though?
This can.
And so, you're trying to get it done before the others start?
Trying to get it all done because if you have to abate while somebody else is in the building, that's when you end up when the, hold on a second, the men in white coats are here and they're putting up the plastic and everybody's got to get out and that's what holds up projects. So, if we can get this all done before that July one date, then when those contractors are in there, they don't have to worry about that at all.
Can't we hire a few more, get a few more containment rooms so it takes a little bit shorter time? I mean, throw a little bit more money at it so the kids can go to school when they're supposed to?
They.
I'm simplifying, but anyway.
Pretty expensive days of school.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why we're here, right?
Is the three-day, shutting down three days, I mean, critical? I mean, is that, is that what you're saying?
Okay, critical as far as to their education, critical to this project?
Well, I know it's critical to their education, but.
It's, it's critical to the project.
So, what can we do to?
I mean, if it's that tight, it's worrisome.
Then, then they start, right, I mean, the kids are out of there at noon on the last day, right? And those guys are in, I mean.
I find it difficult to believe that three days is, is that, I mean, we're splitting hairs here, you know, in three days.
I'd rather take three days on the front end and have those rather than push it and have things squeezed on the other end.
Well, it's still probably gonna get squeezed on the other end no matter what, but.
Well, I'll raise another concern then, on the front end, in the three days. Doing part of the abatement with the kids in school in other levels is different than being a hospital and a clinic where people are there for an hour and out. We have young kids that are gonna be in this building for eight out, for, from eight until three. And containment being, I'm not an expert on that, but that wouldn't make me, I don't, I worry about the safety.
Wouldn't be a warm place.
No, it wouldn't.
Because kids are gonna be curious.
I'd rather have the kids out of the building for the abatement. So, can we use the church? Can we use the community center? Can we find a place to?
Can we?
Hold classes so that the abatement can happen? I don't know, but I'm, that's a concern.
That, you know, I understand that and I have a little experience with this. It's one of my really, I just, this is an overblown issue in my opinion. You're treating asbestos like it's friable, asbestos like it's radioactive or something. It's not. That's why you're paying twenty, you know, a quarter of a million dollars is to protect the kids. So, you know, I, I mean, this is over, overdone and that's exactly why it's overdone, is to protect the kids, so.
They said that they put up plywood and seal it with plastic so that that entire section is going to be sealed off. So, there's not a chance of any fragment coming out.
And there's no positive air pressure that's gonna push, so to speak, asbestos out? It's all gonna be negative pressure so that it's contained?
Yes, exactly.
I haven't, I don't know you two, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Mike Frye with UNESCO.
What's your?
I'm a project manager on the ventilation project or energy project.
I'm Dan Bush with UNESCO overseeing the operations of the company, with a group and assistant Mike on the projects. Neither one of us are Pat with IEA or with the U.N.S.C. But it is a negative containment area, so it's taking scoop, or taking air through it and out and with, with the monitoring that they have going on.
Monitoring is one of the big parts of what we're paying for. So, it's, they will have air monitoring going on at all times.
Do we have to have that?
The air monitoring?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, even if there's nobody in the building, you still have to?
Yep, yep. That, that's just part of, that's part of it. If you've got anyone removing any asbestos, you've got to have the air monitoring and it's really expensive.
Give you guys the three days, you gonna make the deadline?
We open schools every year for the past twenty years, I've been.
So, you will make the deadline?
And what we do is, is we look at the school and what this allows us to do is do some of the abatement area, let's call it lower, lower level, 'cause you brought that up. And what we would do is have contractors work in some of the other areas while that's being worked on. And then when that is done, with that frees it up 'cause that first week, then the contractors can go down and do the demolition in the lower level and start some of the installation there. So, we'd be working with the abatement company and with the, the school staff to see what areas of the building can we move around. So, we've had projects where we put ceilings back up in the middle of June, so we start phasing throughout a school instead of, okay, it's Labor Day, good luck, we're out of here this weekend, put it back together. So, we lay out a schedule and work with the districts.
And this is nothing you'll be acting on tonight, but I just, this is your heads-up that this will be an agenda item?
It's nothing to worry about. That's what I heard from him. Twenty years, he hasn't had an issue.
Can you do some, per Michaeline's suggestion, maybe some? I, I think that there is an issue because families thought that this was the last day of school and now they're gonna have kids. And they weren't planning on having kids during that time. And they're, they can learn a lot at the park, they can learn a lot at the International Owl Center, the, I mean, there's lots of things in town that they could do and lots of, I know it'd be more work for the teachers to plan for those last three days, but there's learning that could occur even though they aren't in the school. And I think from a, you know, I hate to change the, I mean, yes, it is a few months out, but I still, and if somebody doesn't have a place for their kid to go, let's say they have a kindergarten, are we offering hurricane watch and where is that gonna be? Just that sort of.
Hurricane watch for the summer is going to have to move to the upstairs of the preschool.
But will there still be preschool at that time and can they go there? Because you closed elementary, did you close preschool? So, just certain things like that to think through. But I would be more in favor of the kids still attending school, just doing something different with their day, so.
Field trip.
Field trips, lots of field trips, yeah, yeah.
Well, look into it, we'll get some more information next week. You know, both thoughts of it. Because if you're gonna move them for three days, do they wanna be in there a week before or something you need, you know, like the original, for the basement?
It's the twenty-third, the basement, the students can be in the rest of the building.
So, you're looking at the twenty-third and the twenty-seventh, I think, right? I mean, they're done on the twenty-seventh.
They're done on June second.
So, you're looking at a few extra days. So, I mean, if you're looking at moving them, you know, just look at, you know, the whole time period necessary. Because that would cover what Michaeline was talking about, what-ifs. You know, we, just to see.
But you understand the necessity of starting the abatement early.
And how long will the abatement go for? Is it going until July first?
July first?
Yeah.
Yep, it's gonna take a solid six weeks to get it done and that's with a big crew. That's, they, 'cause I asked that already too.
Honey, honey's got a question.
I just have a question. So, are the teachers going to, are we going to have to empty our rooms before they're allowed to get in there? I mean, I'm just, that might be a factor too because we have a lot of stuff. And if we have to empty our rooms, I mean, we have to get, if, everything has to be out of there because you don't want that dust settling on.
Everything's covered in plastic. So, when they come in, everything's covered in plastic. There will be some things that will need to be removed from rooms.
But not everything?
Yep, it depends on where it is in the, the classroom too. And that's one of those, if something is getting taken out and something new is getting put in there, everybody knows exactly, okay, this register won't be here next fall, take everything off of it. But this is, when we're doing the project, after that, the desks, everything will get moved to the gym. So, there will be some clean up in your rooms.
Is, is probably in March, meet with the elementary staff, go through a little kind of a PowerPoint of what this whole thing is about because it's, you don't do this every year. So, we'll show you what it's about, what sort of things need to get removed, cleared out and that sort of stuff, so. You know, and basically anything that's yours to take at home because it could be broke, it could be removed and it's just inevitable. And then what do we do for the rest of stuff?
No, there's, but that's.
But that's another, you know, that's time also that has to be factored into, just keep that out there.
Clarification, this asbestos abatement is only at the elementary building, there's nothing?
No, there's abatement at the high school as well.
Oh.
There's abatement, it's all the ceilings in the elementary building and then at the high school building, it's rooms twenty-two, twenty-four, fifteen, seventeen. There's six rooms in the high school building.
So, Todd will probably do the same thing here, is along the same timeline.
It's, um.
So, the teachers know.
May first.
Well, no, with.
Give them a little bit of time.
The abatement, the abatement here is a much faster abatement because it's just talking about taking down the ceilings, washing the grids so that we can put up new panels. It's not chipping paint off concrete. That's chipping the paint off the concrete in the elementary ceiling. That's what's really a lot of work because they'll have to put the rubber mats down on the floor and then cover them with two levels, two layers of plastic to make sure that the wooden floors aren't damaged and then power wash to get the asbestos out.
Yeah, if it makes you feel any better, if we were gonna demolish the building, we'd have to still abate it. That's how crazy the one is.
It probably costs us more.
Well, there's more to come on it, so.
Yep, but that's, I wanted to give you a heads-up that it was coming.
Anybody has any more questions?
Just one question, when they were talking about, you were talking about.
When they were talking about, you were talking about moving the dust to the gym, when you said the whole elementary school, can the kids be in the gym? Or is this?
During the summer?
No, I mean during the abatement. The gym is off everything.
It's kind of two things, pushing the stuff aside for the abatement to take place, and then in the summer for the ventilation or furniture going to the gym for storage.
But, so these three days, they can't even be in the gym?
We'll do it first.
It's the whole school?
We're not abating in the gym. There's, I'm not aware of any abatements in the gym, unless Pat is.
So the containment would be set up in the other portion, and we could have kids out in the gym?
But do they have access to the restroom? Are they allowed to go into the kindergarten rooms at all?
The kindergarten rooms are not being abated at all.
That should be fine, because that's newer.
So then they would have access to the restroom?
So they would have bathrooms and the two classrooms and no place to eat or anything like that, but at least they have the gym to play in. Okay.
Well, we're actually thinking of meeting up on stage.
We work? Oh, yeah, we work, yes.
Well, we have done it before where we've taken all the tables and brought them up to the gym, because of the flood.
Mm-hmm.
That's, we ate up there, it worked fine.
Well, there's discussion going on, so.
I will talk with Rick, and Rick will talk with his staff about options, and so all of those options will come back to the next board meeting.
Maybe the kids can help the teachers clean the classrooms.
Well, during.
You take this book down over here.
During that expo, that last week, the teachers can't be in their rooms.
Yeah, well, more to come on that. So, let me get along. All business items for discussion, we'll be discussing this till March, probably. Let's do this, let's move the cheerleading up, if that's okay with everybody, since they've been waiting patiently. If that works, okay. So we'll start with them. Cheerleading proposal, Heidi?
So you asked us to just see what it would be for cost-wise, as far as if we just did football, home games only. So you can see our budget changed quite a bit from when we were doing basketball and It, we took off the uniforms like the, because we figured we could just do, like yoga pants, the kids could buy yoga pants, and we just buy like a pullover shirt of some type for sharing for football games. The travel was just in case of state games. We no longer put like paints on there because we're just doing locker signs, we didn't, if we don't need to do, or gym signs, we didn't think we needed paint or anything for that, so we took that out. I think we took the price of advisor down a little bit because we wouldn't need as long a time, so.
So this is one advisor?
This is one advisor, and I know that you said that if there were 15 or more students that.
Yeah, if 15 is the number, then we'd have to have two.
And, and does that work that the second advisor gets the same amount, or is that a?
No, it's usually an assistant advisor, as they get a fraction of it. The other thing we've done is if there are two advisors and fewer than 15 for junior class, they split the advisor fee. So if you have two, if they're mutually agreeable, they just take that advisor fee and split it between the two of them.
We said the practices would be held in the summer to get ready for the first football games and the fall until football games are over. But generally, they only, there would only, I think there was only two or three home games out there for football? Maybe three?
You have four.
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 Four homes or a way?
Unless you go on, and there's more.
Well, that's true.
The cheerleaders can make them one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the cheerleading proposal.
I have a motion, sorry. Sorry, by Gary, further discussion on this?
Yeah, the only thing that I would like to say is that we should have a minimum number of students that are interested. I don't think we should have a team if we have two, three.
I think last time you had mentioned, Heidi, that you'd like to have like five.
Yeah, we said at least, you know, five or six. If we're only, are we talking about only doing the football one now? Yeah, we'd probably need at least six of us in the football thing.
So if we don't get enough participation, then we just kind of.
Right. I would agree with that one, and I think that, yeah. You wouldn't want to, that would look kind of crazy to have.
Make sure that she'll accept the amendment.
I accept the friendly amendment.
First six.
Would this be an ongoing authorization, or can we do it on a one-year and get some feedback on how it went, both from your point of view and from the kids' point of view and from the athletic director's point of view? Just, just feedback before we put it in place in an ongoing manner? I don't know if that's possible.
Yes.
Heidi has.
Yep.
Sure, get them on.
We're all friends here, why not? So then after this, the first year, we'll come back and we'll talk about it if we have any questions, see how it went. Any other questions?
So Todd, does it fall under?
I think so.
This is Shuddy's vision then, or, I don't know, the AD, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's a support activity for applicants, is what it is.
So then.
So they have Minnesota State High School, like, you know, guidelines they have to follow, but it's.
So is she, is she aware of this proposal and all that?
Yes, she's, she's got it done with us this summer, and we talked about possibly trying to get it started this year, but we didn't have the funding at any point, so.
She was fine with it, or any concerns that she would add?
She just worked with them on, you know, setting up, bring the proposal forward.
So we will have to post for applicants for cheerleading advisor? So that all has to follow the same process?
Any other questions? Okay, we have more, should we have a second? All in favor? Polls? Okay, pass. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving back up to a awarding of bids.
Okay. Okay, so we got the.
So what's on the screen, what was in your board packet? It was a letter of recommendation for the ventilation project at the elementary school, the high school DCD renovations, and the high school gym bleacher replacement projects. Those were bid on January 26th. The low and best, the low bids for each of the areas of responsibility were shown along with their base bid, and I also believe you had a bid tabulation of all of the bids received in your basket as well.
And if you look at the bid tabulation with the mechanical, the, they needed Xs in both one and two, and so did HIMAC not have one?
That is for the addendum, recognizing the addendum.
Okay.
In the, during the bid process, once the plans came out, we had two addendums that we issued that modified the plans and/or specs, and HIMAC did not recognize the second one in the bid form?
They may have seen it, they may not have checked the box, or if they would have been logged, then they've been asked to do the project with that second addendum. So it was just a notice of what, what they checked out of the form.
You know, we've got the, the first bids that I have on a date of January 29th, and that seems to be the, you know, composite, and then your update, Crin, on February 5th mentioned that Michael Frye was going to talk to some of the contractors about making some changes. So is that reflected in the document we're looking at?
It is not. The, the bids were right at our budget, and that doesn't leave us room for contingency.
Right.
So inevitably, there's going to be things that come up on the project that need to be changed or additional money to be spent. So we went back to each of the apparent low bidders and asked them for value engineering items, things that we could change, or things that they saw during the bid process that could have been a different method or a different solution than what was offered in the design documents. So we did get a number of items that they brought to us. We are considering some of them. Those are not reflected in any of these numbers. We've come up with about $200,000 of value engineering items that would become our contingency.
So what we want to do is, is recommend the award of the contracts of the bids the way we are, and the contractors know that they're getting a change order for those reduced items.
So that would include like the soundproofing walls that, on the chiller?
That was one of the items that we'd recommend taking out.
Is it odd to only get one electrical bid and like two mechanical, and it's that many dollars?
It was odd considering a couple days before the bid, we had three electrical contractors that were going to bid it. One of them dropped out because he was going to partner with another contractor because it was just too big for him, and that other contractor who's going to partner with decided not to, to partner up. Another bidder came to our pre-bid meeting, asked questions during the process, and chose not to bid it.
The mechanical side of it, I mean, that's a lot of money for, for only two bids.
There was some late drops. And what they do, mechanicals, they're bidding, you know, at least once a week, probably twice a week on projects, so they're going to, they're going to bid, 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 oh, I got that job, now I'm not going to bid that job, or I got this one, I want to go after this one, but then I have to get my bonding, so I need to drop out of this one. So there's a lot of action going in the, in the back room, I suppose, the intention of bid and then the final result.
I mean, does the board have any concerns with that mechanical bid?
I would assume, I, I do, I agree, Joe, but given the timeline, and we've got a strict timeline, and I'm guessing that some of these guys looked at that and said, that's a time I've got all this, that going on, and I'm not, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be available to put people on the ground.
We had great participation at the, the pre-bid meeting where we invited the contractors to come in, and we reviewed the project and took them through the building. We filled the lunchroom, every table, and the lunchroom was full of participants, so. So it's other circumstances that probably led them not to bid it. I was happy to see we got at least two mechanicals so we could figure the numbers.
The only thing, I, I know we've had some issues with one of the, one of the bidders that you selected. Is there anything safeguards we can put in place so we don't have the issues like we had prior?
Well, UNESCO will have a state superintendent here four days a week during the entire construction period, monitoring the progress and running the schedule and having the meetings and.
I don't, I wasn't, I don't know all the detailed issues they had before, but I just know they did.
And that's why we're kind of having you guys here to make sure that you take liability on any things that are not.
That's right.
What they should be correct.
We're keeping them in, in touch with the schedule and the spec requirements, installation requirements.
And they check all the installations, so.
Now, is there any type of contingency as far as timelines if you don't get it done in this? Because we are running on times. You know, if they don't get it done, is there something that says we don't pay you for any extra?
Yeah, the contractors are well aware of what the deadline is. In fact, our substantial completion deadline's the middle of August. So that, that does a couple things for us. It allows us to shoot for an earlier date to get teachers in sooner, and if there are some items that need to be finished up, it still gives us a couple weeks before school starts. They know, and they, they've been advised that they need to provide the manpower to get the job done, and they've committed to it by submitting a bid on the project. It's not a surprise to them what the scope of work is and what the schedule is.
So in fact, you, you act as the general contractor and the referee, should there be changes that someone feels is necessary from either side, and who pays for that?
Which is good.
Where is all trade service Winona's? It's out of Winona, Gary.
Out of Winona?
Is it Winona?
Yep.
I'd have to double check the address.
Do we need more, should we do the bids?
Yes, we do.
More?
More should we run?
Second? Second by Gary? Further discussion on it? Do you guys get this posted on where we're at, I'm sure?
Absolutely.
During the, during the project, we'll weekly update, and we'll send it to Crin, and then she'll be as person to whoever, so you can kind of see what's going on, because the teaching staff, they're curious what's happening as well. Sometimes the pictures are reassuring, sometimes are a little scary.
I think it's good that you're going to keep up to date on what's happening, especially before anything happens at the grade school, or what, you know, before and after information.
I think, too, if we could put some stuff on the website, just real basic, like I've gotten numerous people asking what the bleachers are going to look like. Oh, if we put a picture out there, I mean, people are really excited about the new bleachers, then, because I highly know.
This came in tonight, this is what the front of the building will look like, it will all look like one building.
Bleachers.
We will get you pictures of the bleachers, that's all part of this middle process that the contractors.
Yeah, that'd be great, and then if we.
Absolutely.
It's gone with the ethos and, and the.
I don't know if this was meant for board consumption tonight, but it's, I just got it at 3 o'clock this afternoon, so that's our architectural rendering of what the north wall we're planning for it to look like with administrative board approval, so.
It's just, it's so cool that it's all one building.
Well, I think it's a good idea. Does anybody have any other? I'm sorry, just putting, posting information as we get it, seeing what I'm doing, stuff, so, because I don't like the floors and that type of thing, designs. So, if we have more, should we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Resolution, awarding the sale of general accommodation facility maintenance bonds?
Okay, and Patty, um.
This is where I know where we pay for this stuff.
Actually, there's a lot of good news, so I'll let Patty address it. Patty has been working very, well, and UNESCO's been working very hard for us, too, so it's, this is.
I am pleased, my name is Patty Hemmenover from Springstead Financial Advisor, and I'm really pleased again tonight to share some really exciting news for the, for the district. Today, we went out for competitive bids. As you recall, the, the energy was negotiated, and the reason it was negotiated is because of the way that is structured. It is a COP, and that is typically negotiated, and we went through the process of that. Now, today, we went out for competitive bids, and we closed the bid at 10:30. And we actually had five bids that were submitted. The winning bid was Stefan Nicholas and Company, they've been around for, since 1890, so they've been around for quite some time. And we estimated the interest rate was going to come in about 2.1%. It actually, the winning bid came in at 1.85. Now, that's a savings to the taxpayers of over 181,000 right off the bat. Now, that's not even the best news. The best news is they gave you a premium because it was very competitive. Interest rates are even down, and they dropped the last couple days. So we were really excited in our office, knowing that, what we were up against here. So, we, with the premium, you're going to receive an additional $230,000 to be towards the project that can be used for the asbestos project. So it was an awesome day, and for your district, and we were very, very excited.
And one hand out, the other. And one hand out, the other. Listen, one man, we got it! Got it, little tunnel there.
The second bidder came in at, it was Piper Jeffrey at 1.89. Then it was Robert, it was Raymond James at 1.94. Robert W. Baird, 1.96%, and Northland Securities at 2%. It is who the bidders were. So it was an exciting day for your district, and very, very pleased on the way it came out. Ultimately, your taxpayers, it's less than what we told the taxpayers, so that's a good sign, and plus, you've got money to use for the abatement project. So about $230,000 more that will be used for the abatement project. Now, what will happen tonight is we will, hopefully, the board will accept the resignation, or the, accept the resolution, and then at that point...
Who is reciting? I don't see that on here.
We will be in contact with the bank tomorrow morning, letting them know, and then we will start the process, and you will be receiving the funds in the first week in March.
Nice. Thank you, Patty.
Thanks a lot. Do you have any questions for our... Next step.
So do we have to do a resolution then?
Yep, you have to do the resolution.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion, you have a second?
Do I have to read it?
Read it, you.
No, I think we have to read it.
Everyone's literate, there it is.
Yeah, if you had it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. For the discussion. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First of all...
Nope, no, we have another resolution.
Resolution, okay. Resolution, authorizing, extension of delivery, and documents. I'll read this whole thing out.
So what is this for?
When I was here last month, I said that you will not have any other documents on the COP. And when I contacted Martha Ingrid, she said ahead of time, nope, they won't have any other documents. Well, then, after I called her again, when I, with everything, I said, now are you sure there's no other resolution? And she goes, yep, there's going to be one more resolution. And what this does is it ties out all the agreements, because this is a COP, it's a lease agreement. So if you were to default on your payments, there is part of your facility that could go back to Northland. Okay? It's never happened, but that's kind of like their lien, and that's what you're saying is that there is a ground lease, that you're accepting that if you do default, there are consequences. And this is then saying that the board is accepting all the bids and moving forward. And on the COP, you're receiving the money tomorrow on that.
So this is the negotiated one?
That is the negotiated one, just the tie-up, everything.
Okay, so, we have a motion. So move. Gary, second?
Second.
Second, Mike Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we move on to the principles of the contract.
Oh, yeah, this, we worked with a representative from the Bureau of Mediation Services. He was the same one who was here a few years ago, helping with the teacher contract. So he came in with a little knowledge of the district, and what we worked out is a 0% increase in year one, this year we're in, a 5% increase year two, but then that worked out to a total increase in the package of, if you scroll up...
4.49.
4.49. And then it explains what has been added. The high school principal got an extra stipend, a one-time stipend that's just added to the salary for being the director of Summit Learning Center, and the Houston elementary principal includes the $2,500 increase in the 21-plus years. What was negotiated in, as far as a longevity bump, is as soon as someone has been a principal for 21 or more years within the district, this has to be in the district, then that, that last column, each of those cells has a $2,500 bump in it. So then you see the current package, the year one increase, year two increase, and then overall increase at the bottom. All other benefits stayed the same. On January 1, 2017, the principals will all switch to group health insurance. So that's one of those things, we wanted everybody on group health insurance, we had to wait for the next enrollment period, which would be January 1, 2017. Their insurance language, they have family insurance, but their insurance language matches the teacher's insurance language as far as if they opt for cash-in loan.
So, do we have a motion to approve the principal's contract?
I'm approving the principal's contract.
A motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mike. Discussion? Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, you know, I think it's time that we have a discussion, not right at this moment, however, but in this coming year, on exactly, you know, when I look at that, I see two principals that are in charge of 200 or so kids, and we have two and a half principals that are in charge of somewhere near 1,800. Now, there's a presuppose, presupposition that online is easier or something, I'm not sure, but I, I think looking at our administration and making sure that we're as efficient and streamlined as possible is something we need to do, as hard, as hard as it may be. But I'd like to see that conversation start somewhere in the, in the coming months. Okay. Any males have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Community education, MOU?
This is a memorandum about an understanding that we have for the community education. This is something we were supposed to do every year. I missed it last year, I'm sorry. So we need to do it. This has not been increased at all, so it's the exact same amount that was in there prior. So it's, it's just to maintain that MOU, and this is something we're supposed to approve every year. So it's for our community ed director, and it's the extra stipend for that job.
Do we have any metrics on classes offered and participation? Awesome. Great question.
No, I can get that for you.
No, I think, it's my, one, I'm glad you asked that, Gary, because it's exactly where I wanted to go with this. I mean, we have not had a sit-down look at community education since I've been on this board, and I'm not sure, are people going? Are we providing really community education, and at what cost? So...
Our preschools run through community education.
I realize that little sports things are too, and that used to be part of what the community provided, so.
Big one.
I just think it's another area that I think we really should have some conversation.
There is a number of things offered, I don't, and I'm on the community ed advisory department, I don't know how, what the participation is in all of it.
Well, and I know on our snow day, there were some senior citizens that didn't get called about their class being canceled, and that was supposed to be a, a robocall from the state because it was the 55 and over driving class. And so there were some that still showed up, and so I was helping them out on the snow day.
That's happened before, just this time, because I showed up for a class that was canceled, and that's several years ago now, but there's some concerns with the, I mean, that's one example of, you know, how are things being done? How are the, how are the participants being served, and how's the communication, and what support is needed, and...
Why don't we have, maybe if somebody puts that, have her put it together and present it to the board as far as participation, class, what's happening, what's, you know, make it like a biannual thing?
Yeah, what's working, what hasn't.
You know, what's working, what's not working. I know when we had some conversations and meetings I've been to, you know, how many people show up, is it worth bringing, doing again next year, is it not? What should we look at? If we get outside feedback from the community saying, hey, I want to have this class, you know, what about this, that type of thing?
How often does the committee meet, Ron?
Four times a year.
Four times a year?
I think twice a year is what I just thought of, I don't know if that's good or not, but just a thought, we can talk about it, give it a break, and see what.
Okay, any other discussion?
Motion to approve the community education MOU?
Second, Greg. They approve the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we have Ron make the start?
Joe. Okay. MS HSL Foundation grant.
Hey, that's in your packet, they just needed to get all the numbers in there. You can see the final amount there, and then we'll need to have the board chair and the board clerk sign that as well.
Is this an every-year thing? I forget.
Every year? Do you speak to this?
Yeah, certainly. You know, yeah, for the past, I don't know, probably five, six years or so, since the foundation, we request a grant, and the first one we had come through, I didn't think there was enough money requesting, because I knew we'd probably get more money, so Lisa went back to the drawing board and just put on a bunch more stuff into the foundation. One thing about the foundation, it's based on sales tax dollars of state tournaments, and right now, it's out of legislation, so if you talk to legislators, encourage them to put that sales tax exemption back in for the state high school aid, because that money goes to the foundation, that goes back up to schools. So we're hoping that that will get back in, but right now, it could sunset out and we won't have this foundation in order to give dollars back to the schools, which we've been recipient of every year on Form A and Form B, which this is.
And I'm assuming that's pretty important to the rural schools especially, isn't it?
Well, it's important to all schools, and Form A, which is interesting, deals with a pretty reduced lunch, you know, that, that's really helpful for some of the city schools. This one here, the Form B, it's actually, it's amazing, the, this inner-city kids, they just can't get home without getting a ticket for the bus or something like that, so they're able to write a grant because they can show a real hardship for transportation. But for, yeah, rural, rural schools and the training and that, what we get, this is, this is a big deal, and we've been able to utilize these dollars to, to help our coaches out and our kids when they have a hardship to pay for activity fees, we use this foundation dollars to, to pay for their activity fees as well.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. New business, so is ready discussion approval policies for first reading? Anything you want to add to that, Mike Lee?
I think, and these are in updated language that you found?
No, these were on, these are just written.
So announcements, one events? Breakfast? Can I just give one update on the Hiawatha Valley Ed District? We had, UNESCO was nice enough to look at a building in Lewiston for us and give us, you know, some ideas of what that might cost in terms of a consolidation, particularly of the Alternative Learning Center, because the Dover facility will be, well, we thought we were going to have to leave, but we might not for another year, but we don't know. But we looked at that and then determined that, and I'm the chair of the Building and Facilities Committee, and it needs a new roof, and so for the time being, right now, we've put that on hold. We're not planning on, on going into negotiations to purchase, purchase that building, and we're doing some extra meetings now, this next week actually, to look at where we're providing services, and we have rent that we're paying both to La Crescent and Caledonia and Dover and Kellogg, and, and in excess of maybe a quarter million all told. So we're looking at where we can, where does consolidation make some sense, and it's kind of difficult, because you've got to figure out where the kids come from for each program, whether it's a wind program or an alternative learning center like Summit, and then figure out whether you can consolidate that service someplace. I mean, we've got Mabel as one school district, and you have, you know, Wabashaw Kellogg on the other end, and then, so it's, you know, it's not quite so easy to figure out where the center point is that would make sense. So anyway, we're working on that stuff, so. Thanks, Gary. Trent?
We've got the legislative breakfast on February 20th, and next, well, next week is super, uh, school board recognition week.
Super school board.
Super school board, well, you guys are a super school board, so it's...
And I recognize most of you. She sent out that evaluation form just recently, did, did she?
Yes.
She's sucking up already.
Oh, and as far as jumping ahead, future agenda items, at the next Tuesday's meeting, once again, it's kind of that 360 approach. I will be downloading all the results of the evaluation, and I will be putting them in the board packet, so you can see how that, how the different staff members, all exchange users feel and doing, and then we'll have a, if the evaluation committee could have a meeting prior to next Tuesday's board meeting, so we can discuss how that's going to, to go. And that would mean that online committees would have a, a meeting before the board meeting on March 1st.
Good. Gary, maybe?
Let's schedule a five. So next, I'm sorry, when, when are we doing the meeting?
That's what we have to decide, so before we leave, yes, let's get the other call for the date, give it a hand.
When will it be done?
Let's schedule a five.
For, as actually?
I sent out an invite for an evaluation committee at 5:00 next Tuesday, directed to the next board meeting, so some of you have heard that.
Oh, I thought that was a reminder to do that evaluation, that was an invite. Yes. I didn't open that email. Got it.
As long as that works out, you just got to make sure.
That was good.
Well, let us know if it's going to work.
I, yeah, that'll be fine.
Works. So you're in.
So I have one update, I attended the Houston County Collaborative Meeting a week ago, and our funding is, sounds like it's going to be stable for another year, but the funds may be gone after that, so for budgeting purposes, I think in the next round, I've just been in contact with Gwen trying to, because I couldn't answer some of the questions that the people around the table were asking, so Gwen gave me that information. So I just want to make sure that we are putting in and getting reimbursed for the eligible expenses that we can, so the money isn't just sitting down there, and we do have the same funding for the next year, but we don't have any back funding, because presumably that'll be spent down, and then in the next budget planning cycle, some of that money which goes to Hiawatha Valley Mental Health, may or may not be there, depending on funding. It's not a huge amount, but every little bit helps.
Oh, yes, and that's the collaborative money, it's helping to pay for the transportation for preschool.
Oh, okay.
Kids...
Oh, okay.
Leading kids.
Okay, so, yeah, I couldn't answer, they were asking me what the money is.
And I'm sorry, I couldn't attend the meeting.
Any else, Trent?
We're planning for the next meeting confer in February, I'm not sure what date in February.
24th.
The 24th.
Meeting and committee updates? Do we have any? Feedback, anything else we, we talk about?
Just make sure you fill out your evaluation in the, the online one. And I know there's the other...
So what was, what, how, what was the, did Ann send it out, or the evaluation?
Yeah, it's a monkey.
Survey monkey.
So look for the puppy, baby monkey baby?
Actually, Marty Momsen and his wife adopted a monkey that had been used and abused, and they named it Survey.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
We have a motion to, yeah. Motion by Joe, seconded by Ron. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. You two stay there, I need signatures.